And councillors, we are now recording.
Thank you Shane and good afternoon to the members of Georgetown Council and members of the public. We're pleased to welcome you to the Georgetown Council meeting of the 23rd of June. Before we start, we'll have our customary acknowledgement of country. The Georgetown Council pays its respect to the traditional and original owners of the land in which we meet, their elders past, present and emerging, and we pay respect to those that have passed before us and acknowledge today's Tasmanian Aboriginal people who are the custodians of this land. Present today, we have myself, Greg Keyes, the mayor, Tim Harris, the deputy mayor, thank you Tim, councillor Chris Barakoff, thank you Tim, councillor Heather Barwick, the blue block in the right hand corner, welcome Heather, councillor Justine Brooks, good day councillor, thank you Justine, good day councillor Greg Dawson, there he is, thank you Greg, councillor Winston Mason, thank you councillor, councillor Andrew Micalletta, thank you, and councillor Peter Parks, thanks Pete, we have an attendance Shane Power, the general manager, the manager of corporate services and finance Cheryl Hyde, the manager of works and infrastructure David Richardson, the manager of development and environment Rex Cassidy, the manager of livable and connected communities Megan Bennett, the manager of people performance and governance Brent Dare, and the executive support and governance officer, ever-present Louise Dickinson, welcome. Apologies and leave of absent there are none today. Confirmation of the minutes, this is item 2.1, do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Mason is our mover, do I have a second at councillor Barakoff? Councillor Mason.
Nothing to add.
Thank you councillor Barakoff.
Likewise, nothing to add.
Any questions, statements from the council? Councillor Barwick.
Thank you Mr Chairman, I would publicly like to apologize for my error at the workshop held on the 9th of June, where I stated I had called a point of order on the general manager in March. The point of order was not in the March meeting, it was in the April meeting. And it was a procedural motion that I was calling the point of order on, so I'd like to apologize for you having to spend time to check that out being that it wasn't March, thank you.
Thank you councillor, much appreciated, none is necessary, even you are human, given your normal extraordinarily high standard, so no problem. Closing from councillor Mason.
Nothing, thank you.
With that, I'll put it to a vote, all those in favour, please raise your hand. And we are unanimous, thank you very much. Late items, there are none. Public question time. I believe we have received no questions for this meeting.
That is correct Mr Mayor, with the exception of a late question that didn't meet the notice period. And that question has been submitted by Mr John Glisten. And if you had that in your person, you could read to that or I could read that out. And the mayor can choose to respond to that or take that on notice.
Well, I think in the interests of transparency, why don't we, if you read out the question, then I'll give a response, why don't we do that?
Sure, so councillors, the question reads from Mr John Glisten as follows. I note that in the agenda, page 73, section 13.6, capital works program, buildings and structures, there is a strategic asset acquisition costing $1 million. Can you please tell me what is the council, what it is the council intend to purchase at $1 million? And what is valued, what is it valued at by the value of general?
Thank you, we'll respond to that, so thank you John, that $1 million is listed as a strategic acquisition, which is to fund a decision of council which was moved in closed session in the May council meeting. For reasons of confidentiality and commercial bias, we can't disclose any more details at this point in time, but full disclosure of the matter will be given to the public when it's appropriate to do so. So, thank you for your question. That being, then there are no further questions. We'll move then to item five, which is the declarations of interest, councillors, are there any real or perceived issues of conflict of interest which any of you would like to declare? There are none, thank you very much councillors. Item six, which is the general manager's declaration, is noted as it stands and signed by the general manager Shane Power, thank you. Item seven, as a planning authority, this month, there are none. It's always a little bit disappointing when we don't have new things to discuss which are for our community, but hopefully we'll have more in the coming months. Development and environment, item eight, again this month, there are none. And item nine, works and infrastructure, again, there is no. On page 11, if you're following in the printed notes, we get to item 10, which is corporate services and finance, and item 10.1, which is a recommendation regarding hard waste options and future treatment of those hard, yes, I see a pair of hands from councillor Barwick.
Mr Chairman, I'd like to move that council provide for eligible rate pass and residents of the municipality, two days of free hard waste disposal held over two separate weekends, and two days free green waste disposal held over two separate weekends during 2020, 2021, at the Georgetown Waste Transfer Station and Pipers River Transfer Station.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm struggling to see any difference to the officers' recommendation on the bottom.
If I may, Mr Chairman, I'll tell you the difference, the B only does the two days free waste, but theirs includes green waste and hard waste together. Whereas the one at the top that I've just moved and have included Pipers River, gives them two days of hard waste and two days of green waste.
Right.
That's all I've done is just put the transfer of transfer station into the A, not B, remove B. And I think Mr councillor Harris is going to second that.
Correct.
So Louise, I'll just double check that you've got it all recorded Louise, it looks like you do on the screen, which is good. We have the mover being councillor Barwick and seconded by councillor Harris. All right, in that case councillor Barwick, if you'd like to introduce the motion.
Thank you Mr Mayor, I just, to me, I just thought, well, look, why do we treat the country a little bit different to the the ordinary municipality of the town of Georgetown? Pipers Rivers are quite a way away from everyone out in Georgetown, but the country, the Dow Wimpole Road can go there, Mount Direction can go to the Georgetown tip, whereas you've got the other end of the Glen Road and that, it's easier for them to go to maybe the Pipers River tip. I'm not sure who goes to which tip, but by giving the same service to the opening of the Pipers River Transfer Station, I think it's being a lot fairer for everybody.
Thank you councillor Barwick, councillor Harris.
Thank you Mayor, I'm in agreeance with giving them the same amount of access as Georgetown. I'd also like to recommend that maybe the hard waste and the green waste disposal days are held on long weekends, because then there's a lot of the shack owners who are down there doing the maintenance on long weekends and they can utilise the Pipers River Collection Service there. I don't know if you've actually planned which weekends are to be held on, but it would be a better idea so that the shack owners can access it, thank you.
Thank you, all right, so in that case, we'll just dispense with formality, there's a lot of questions in hand straight away, we'll just start with councillor Barakoff.
Is this a question, I mean, there's two waste transfer stations, are they going to be open? Have three days on the same day or they're going to be separate days, so they're separate days? And is there anybody for free days in New York, just a question, like to know.
Through the chair to the general manager.
Through you Mr Mayor, the logistics of those schedulings hasn't quite been worked out. And as the current proposed resolution or motion stands, that does make some changes to the resource availability by increasing another day. What the officers' report does include in the, under the officers' comments is that these days will be scheduled in appropriate times throughout the year to afford both permanent and permanent residents and holiday property owners the opportunity to reduce their fire risks and clean up their properties, so whilst they haven't been called out on dates at the moment, council staff will work on making the most appropriate dates throughout the year to accommodate all.
Thank you for your question councillor, the next in the queue.
Mr Chairman, I'd just like to call a point of order there, once, if we move this motion as it is, it then becomes an operational issue that the staff check out what times and whatever that it happens, that's really not up to us to do, that's operational. Thank you.
Yes, that's a given, so councillor Parks, you're next in the queue, following you, I'm going to go to councillor Dawson, who had his hand up as well, councillor Parks.
Thanks Mayor, just raises a couple of questions, the statements by the councillors moving and seconding seem a bit ambiguous as far as the I guess wishes or sentiments that go with the the current proposal in front of us. Do we need a bit more clarity on, because I hear councillor Harris talking about specific days, we don't have any budget allocation for the extra, I mean all for equity, but you know, perhaps we just need to be a bit more understanding of what this actually means and when this might be to best fit the community, just a bit lost in all the confusion of, like I say, the statements being made around that.
A good point, and with your permission councillor Parks, let's direct a question maybe to the general manager or to David Richardson, who's president, who might be able to give some of the implication data to us in terms of cost, et cetera, et cetera, so through the chair to the general manager primarily.
Thank you Mr Mayor, and I will defer the question to the manager of infrastructure and works. You know, I think particularly around some context given to why the recommendation was for Pipers River to have one day, or essentially two days versus the four days proposed for Georgetown and why Pipers River in particular was to have both of the freeway materials being received on the one day rather than two individual days, I'll defer that to the manager of infrastructure to give more detail on.
Okay, thanks David.
Yes, thank you councillor, yes, we have trialled a number of different days and different operating models over the previous few years, and the one that has worked very successfully was the one that we done last year, doing the two separate green waste days and the hard waste days at the Georgetown Transfer Station, and also the one at Pipers River. I guess what I'd say is that there was very low usage of the Pipers River facility during those days. And a number of comments that we received from the people utilizing both transfer stations was that it worked quite well compared to the previous years where we actually had it on long weekends, because we got some criticism that the locals couldn't actually utilise that service because they actually left the area. So, we changed it from a long weekend to a non-long weekend over the year period and it seemed to work quite well. So, all the feedback we got was pretty positive.
Okay, and the second part of the question, with the motion as it current stands, are there cost implications that you can envisage for expanding it from two days to four days and including long weekends, can you give a view on that?
Yes, I guess it is the unknown, because there's a cost obviously with the amount of hard waste that we get in and green waste for processing that, so I really couldn't give you accurate figures around that because it is the unknown at this stage as to what extra quantities.
And in terms of council costs for personnel, that sort of thing, any thoughts?
I don't think there would be any major impact on our operational budget if we was to go with that model.
Thank you, that's helpful, councillor Dawson, you were next in the queue.
Yes, I suppose my thoughts around it were initially, to put this back to workshop and the motion to defer, I'm holding off on that at the moment after hearing some of the conversations with the manager of infrastructure. What I think is, I'm against the motion as it sits, because we've come a long way, we've, over the years, we've gone through quite a few different processes to get to where we are, and let's settle down, let's bed this in for a couple of years and see how it goes, and I'm fully supportive of the officers' recommendations, so I'm against this as it sits.
Thank you councillor Dawson, I will note that as you speaking to the motion, rather than a question, are there any other speakers to motion either for or against? I will volunteer from the chair position, so I will be voting against this, only from the point of view that I think we need to entrust our manager of works and infrastructure who has been observing and has been taking feedback from the public, if there is data that suggests that the last time we implemented a scheme, the utilization was low, I think we need to be cognizant of that feedback. And you know, the idea absolutely is to increase the level of service to our full community, including our coastal communities, I'm absolutely all for that. But if the data does not support that, I think it's an unnecessary complication. I think maybe we should ask the general manager to try and be structured around collecting feedback this year, in terms of the number of visitors, the overall volume, whether they're in towners or out of towners, to possibly give us a little bit more colour for a vote and be a little bit more informed and data-driven. If we have a similar encounter next year, but as it stands, I don't believe that there's really enough substance in terms of data to really drive a change in what the officers' current recommendation is. Any further comments? All right, with that, I'll return it to the mover, which is councillor Barwick to close.
Thank you Mr Chairman, I think if council thinks back when they closed the Pipers River tip up there from us, and whether it was just a couple of days back, there was a heck of a lot of criticism went on about that. But what we're looking at here is paying two extra days to open the tip out at Pipers River, that's all it is compared to four days in Georgetown. I find it pretty sad that we sit around here and debate whether we should treat one area different to another area, it's a freebie that we give out, so why not give the same amount of freebie to the country out there? We're trying to get the country under a scheme to bring their rates up to the rates that are being paid in Georgetown, so that's why I have asked for Pipers River to be inclusive of what is happening here at Georgetown, we either do it full or we don't, thanks.
Thank you councillor Barwick, with that, I'll put this motion to a vote. All of those in favour of councillor Barwick's motion, please raise your hand. We have councillor Barwick, we have councillor Mason, we have councillor Harris, we have councillor Micalletta. All those who are opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. We have councillor Keesa, we have councillor Brooks, we have councillor Barakoff, we have councillor Parks and we have councillor Dawson. The motion is defeated. In which case, we will then revert back to the officers' recommendation as it stands on page 13. Do I have a mover councillor Dawson, I'm assuming is the mover, thank you, and we have a second in councillor Parks. Councillor Dawson, if you can speak to your motion, please.
I think most of it's been said, other than one point that I'd like to make is that, now today we've got a budget process, a rating policy is coming up. What we're doing there is pretty much the same as what's happening all across the state, and that's freezing our rates. To make different changes on the hop now, that cost the council budget more than what we have anticipated for and what we're planning for, I think would be wrong, so I'll just put the motion forward and as it was, I think it's considered and it's well-based, let's go forward.
Thank you councillor Parks as seconded.
Thanks Mayor, yeah, I was probably just going to say the same thing that, you know, we've we've come to crossing the road where we've frozen our budget for the year, we know our expenditure and where we need to have those dollars spent and to increase in different areas really puts us at an unknown risk that we probably shouldn't be taking this earlier, we haven't even moved that budget yet. You know, and some of the comments around, we're bringing the rates up and to the expectation of Georgetown rates, you know, that's could be flawed also, I know there's been conversations about not continuing that rate model. So, a lot of things, I guess, said in haste and that perhaps aren't based actually, in fact, that can be changed. Above all, I think we're at a particular juncture where we need to stick by the budget that we know we can operate under, thank you.
Thank you, I'll take any speakers for or against all questions at this stage, yes councillor Harris.
I'd just like to let you know that I will inform all the people out in the country that you're treating them differently to the people in the town. And those names will be passed on, thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order.
Yeah, look, I'll record you as having spoken to the motion. There's nothing personally identifiable in the statement as it stands, so I'm remiss to call a warning on that one, but councillor just let's just leave it as it stands.
I think it's really off to be threatened in the council main, thanks Mayor.
Hi Greg.
There's a little bit on the off.
Well, it's not a threat, it's just a promise, that's all, it's not a threat, I'm not threatening anybody, I'm just going to let the people know in the country.
Point of order.
It's intimidating Tim.
Yeah, look Tim, unfortunately I have to send you on that one, I think that that's not appropriate behaviour. I think that pointing your, pointing any constituent to the minutes of a meeting is appropriate, but I think going out there and waging a campaign is not appropriate, and as such, I have to issue you with a formal warning on that. So, warning councillor Harris, any other questions or statements?
Mr Mayor, just while you're having councillors consider the motion, I just want to bring the attention to the council, that councillor Mason internet connection has dropped off as of 1:23, so if you can't reach a majority for this particular vote, we may need to come back to it. Or wait five minutes as per the temporary meeting guidelines that have.
I think we will follow the ALGAT standard guidelines, so we'll continue with the debate and hopefully councillor Mason is successful in rejoining, and I note that Louise has successfully recorded the recorded it in the minutes, thank you very much. Any further questions or any further comments relating to the motion? Okay, that's good, with that, I'm going to hand it back to councillor Dawson to close.
I do, I have no issue with the community, the broad community knowing how I've sort of debated around this issue, not a problem at all, I'm happy with councillor Harris, but more than sundry now. Certainly not intimidated by that, I welcome that, because I think when we have those robust debates, I think that it's just as important for people to understand both sides, and I'm more than welcome people to contact me if they'd like to understand why I voted this way. Other than that, let's put motion.
Thank you very much, now in terms of the ALGAT meeting guidelines, we are obliged to pause at this point in time, so from the time when councillor Mason dropped off, which is 1:23, it is now 1:26, we need to pause another two further minutes, at which time I'll be able to put it to a vote, so if anyone, please just be patient and remain on mute, and hopefully Winston joins.
Technically councillor Harris has also left the meeting.
He has, that is correct, Louise, if you can please just note. Thank you councillor Brooks. I think we can record that as at 1:27.
Mr Mayor, I'm just allowing councillor Mason back into the meeting.
There he is, all right, the planets are aligning for everybody, welcome back councillor Mason, so we're about to put the officers' recommendation on page 13, that's the officers' recommendation for 10.1, as it stands, as it's written in your meeting paper, we're going to put that to a vote. All right, so having no further ado, all those who are in favour with the recommendation of 10.1, please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, councillor Harris has rejoined the meeting, so it's councillor Keesa, councillor Brooks, councillor Barakoff, councillor Dawson, councillor Parks, all those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. We have councillor Harris, councillor Mason, councillor Micalletta and councillor Barwick, so the motion is carried five to four.
Excuse me Mayor, I never left the meeting, you called a five minute pause, I was in the room, I could hear everything that was going on.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, but you need to be present so that we can actually understand where you are, and because you left, which is difficult for us to ascertain, and so in those circumstances, we'll always defer to assuming that you've left the meeting.
No, it's the same as getting up at the council table and going and getting a cup of coffee at the table over in the corner, no difference.
I'm afraid I can't interpret it that way. All right, so that motion is carried and we have, let me just record this. Dawson.
Councillor Harris seems to have left the meeting again.
Correct, that is correct, and councillor Harris is back. Welcome back councillor, all right. Item 11, livable and connected communities, this month there are no items for consideration. Item 12, which is matters of involvement for the mayor and then for the deputy mayor afterwards, so any questions on item 12.1? Councillor Barwick. Councillor Barwick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. 25th of May, you met with the landowner and with the general manager, Repotential Hillwood Rock Climbing Talks. Could you update the council on that, please?
Absolutely. Thank you for your question. So as part of our strategy to expand our portfolio of tourism based attractions, we are exploring with a number of different landowners, bringing additional offerings to our community. As you may well be aware, there is a well-known and almost listed in the whole of Australia, one of the greatest rock climbing features located in Hillwood. It's a feature that is covered in numerous publications. It's promoted within that rock climbing community. We've been engaging with the landowner who has currently closed that facility off due to insurance risks on how we could potentially reopen it and how we could potentially increase the marketability of that asset as part of our tourism strategy. We don't have a formal proposal that is well enough fleshed out to put in front of council, but we will definitely be doing so in workshop first. And then hopefully from workshop, we can progress things to a point where there's a formal motion for council's consideration. But that's where we currently stand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but you referred to we. Who is we?
Myself and the general manager.
And the landowner?
I'm not at liberty to disclose that. Unfortunately, it's personally identifiable.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Barwick. Any further questions, Tim? Thank you. In which case, the deputy mayor, deputy, I know you're always busy supporting myself and the general manager. Is there anything you'd like to add to matters of involvement for this month?
Nothing to add really, just a question that I brought up with the GM and Rex and got an answer back to say that the building in Goldburn Street is correct under current regulations. But the slab that's been laid is further forward than the two units that were next door. And those two units ended up, the builder or the people that built them had to buy a strip of land off the council because they were too far forward. And now they're saying that this one, which is even further forward, is still legal. Why is that so? Wouldn't there be a setback along Goldburn Street in case of widening of future date?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, if I'm to take that as a question, I can suggest that gets raised at item 16 at the appropriate part of the agenda.
I was just going to say that, exactly that. So we'll just list your matters of involvement, that you've been engaged with rate payer and with the planning.
Yeah, well, I had discussions with the owner, the former owner of the two units today. I reckon that'd be a bit sad if they had to buy a strip of land off the council in, in the eighties when they built the units and there's no penalty now for the person who's built it too far forward, in my opinion. Bring it back up later.
All right. So with that, I'll put that to a, well, first I'll call for a mover. Mover for the matters of involvement. Do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Micalletto. Do I have a second, councillor Barraclough? Thank you councillor Micalletto.
Nothing further.
Thank you councillor Barraclough.
Likewise.
Any questions, no observations, other than what's already been discussed? Councillor Micalletto to close.
Nothing further.
Nothing further. We'll put that to a vote. All those in favour of the motion as it stands? Councillor Barwick, you in favour of them? Nope. Okay, so councillor Kea, councillor Brooks, councillor Harris, councillor Barraclough, councillor Dawson. Okay, so it's now unanimous. Everybody has gone for it. Okay, unanimous decision. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, as you're progressing on to the next item, I have recalled that deputy mayor did represent council in capacity, in his capacity at Port Dalroomble, actually, alongside, yeah, South 32 Tempco representatives as well, which of course was to, you know, to celebrate, I suppose, a joint partnership between council, industry and the education department. It's a rather generous provision of digital devices and connections to approximately 130 families from memory. So it was great to have a deputy there representing council and well received.
And as always, I personally like to thank the deputy. I was off to Hobart to go and present to the TAS community fund for a BBAMZ submission, which we were successful in gaining. And once again, thank you for your support, Mr. Deputy. Item 13 is the matters of the general manager. Item 13.1 is the council workshops of May and of June. So we presented with the minutes of the, or the matters involved for the Tuesday 26 of May and then Tuesday the 2nd of June and then Tuesday the 9th of June. All as they stand. Do I have a mover for that workshop package as it stands? Councillor Harris is moving. Do I have a second? Councillor Mason, thank you very much. Councillor Harris?
Nothing further, sir, as they stand.
Thank you kindly. Councillor Mason?
Likewise, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, observations on the item 13.1? There are none. I will return it back to councillor Harris to close if required.
No requirement, no requirement.
Thank you. All right. We'll put that to a vote. All those in favour of item 13.1. And we have a unanimous decision. Thank you, unanimous. Right. Item 13.2 talks to the NRM North, the Tamar Estuary and the Esk River Programme or the Tier Partnership Agreement. There is a recommendation that stands on page 20. Do I have a mover for? Moved by councillor Harris, thank you, and seconded by councillor Dawson. Very much councillor Harris.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think it's a necessary thing that we have to do to partake in this so that we've got some voice within the system as far as the estuary of the Tamar because we end up with all the stuff that comes down the river. So we need to be involved in the discussion right from the outset to, to make sure that everything that's being done, that is possible, is being done. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Harris. Councillor Dawson.
Similar comments as the deputy mayor. And we've pretty much been involved with this process for a few years now. And to stay involved and have a seat at the table, I think is going to benefit the community further down the track. Once we've got the upper echelons of the river sorted out, I mean, everything sort of flows down towards us. And we should be able to get some, you know, some movement on things like siltation, that type of thing within York and those sort of areas. And so I think that the longer they play around up the top end of the river, the better they're going to get it. You know, we repair things down the centre. But we've got to stay involved.
Any one else like to add comment, question? Yes, councillor Barwick.
I'd like to ask a question. NRM North, wouldn't this just be an agreement with the tier group? The question I'm really asking is that I didn't believe that we were so involved with NRM North because that was run by through the Long System City Council. I thought we spent more of our time through Tamar NRM. Just correct me if I'm right or wrong. But I just have a feeling that we were as a council more involved with Tamar NRM. Thank you.
Mr. General Manager, I'll look at the sporting document in the background if you want to take that question in the meantime.
Yeah, sure. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the question councillor Barwick. We're supportive and partnering with all of those entities that we've just mentioned. So tier and the Tamar Management Task Force all fall under the auspice of NRM North. But we also partner with Tamar NRM. And the difference, I suppose, is that, you know, NRM is a much larger entity that obviously auspices these programmes, which have a scientific and a very strategic focus from right across the region. And a Tamar FM are a much smaller entity that council supports with a much smaller contribution on a much more localised level, you know, so things including tree plantings and the like and litter collection and other kind of local environmental pursuits.
Thank you. And I also, I'm just browsing here at the actual prospectus agreement. And it does clearly state the Northern Tasmanian Natural Resource Managers Association, NRM North. And then it lists all of the various differing, different participating bodies, which is Department of Primary Industries, Parks, Water, Environment, Department of Health, Long System City Council, Meann of Valley Council, Georgetown Council, West Tamar Council, Northern Midlands Council, Harbour Tas and Tas Water. So I think technically it is actually correct as it stands. Councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Just referring to the document, it says in there that they, the funding helps them support some on-ground activities. So obviously it helps with testing of the waterway, but also on-ground activities. Can anyone tell me what any of those on-ground activities have actually been? What do we actually receive for our funding? What are the outcomes other than testing of water?
Well, I can only repeat what Rosalie, so we had, we were very fortunate in that we actually have a local resident who is based in Hillwood, who actually came to talk to council at a workshop recently. And she did actually talk about some of the actual collection activities that they did in our area where they'd actually had netted some of the waste outflow portals as well as testing. But I can't really recall much more beyond that specifically to Georgetown. I know there was a lot that happened in, in the Long System, Greater Long System area, particularly in terms of sewage remediation. That was a legacy problem that I'm correcting. Is that a reasonable response? Would you like us to take that question on notice and do a bit more digging for you councillor?
No, thank you. I was at that meeting as well. And I do recall leaving thinking, you know, I'm always mindful of what does Georgetown get for their bang for buck, looking at the division of costs. Though I see that we, we have a smaller proportion than other entities. So, and I agree with councillor Harris in terms of we need to have a seat at the table so that we can have these discussions. But I just wanted to make it clear that we don't often see a lot of activity as a result of our money, some of these partnerships.
Thank you. That's a very good observation. From my side, with my ever-present tourism hat on about how we can capitalise as a community, having a clean waterway so we could potentially host offerings around our unique sponge gardens in the mouth of the Tamar and potentially encourage scuba diving, visitation, et cetera, et cetera. It seems to be a good long-term investment for a clean, healthy waterway ecosystem. Councillor Harris, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, I'd just like to state that most of, of the work is done in the upper reaches because that's where most of the effort is coming from. And not just effort, but washed in rubbish and, and the whole. And there's also some weed eradication done within those systems as well. Well, not eradication, but trying, more, more control than actual eradication because nobody can talk eradication on any sort of weed basis really. But yeah, I think, and the reason we are at the table is because it all happens up there and we want to be seen to make sure that there is work being done on us continually. And a way of doing that is actually monitoring it through meeting attendance and the like.
Thank you very much. And I'll, firstly, I thank you for responding. So in this capacity, you know, a councillor normally has the permission to speak to a motion only once. But in this case, I'm going to allow it because the deputy has direct engagement with, directly involved with Tamar NRM. And as quite an authority, I think it's appropriate that he able, is able to respond to a previous question. So I will allow that. Thank you.
I just thought I was closing now, but that's okay.
Any more? Are you closing? Can I take that as you?
Is there anybody else to speak? That's all.
Anybody else with any questions or before I hand it to the deputy to close? No, okay. So deputy, if you can please close?
Consider it closed.
Thank you kindly. I'll put that one to a vote. All those in favour of item 13.2, the recommendation as it stands, please raise your hand. And we're having one of those meetings where I believe we're on a roll. That is another unanimous decision. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, item 13.3 is one that has been, as always, thoroughly debated. It's been through the workshop circuit in all of its glory. The officer's recommendation gives the background in terms of how the COVID-19 response impacts this decision. But the recommendation for item 13.3 is recorded on page 45. Do I have a mover for the recommendation as it stands? Councillor Harris, thank you, Mr. Deputy. Do I have a second? Councillor Micalletto, thank you. Councillor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I just commend the officers for having the the nerve to put out a budget that hasn't changed since last year, basically. Mind you, I just want to draw our attention to page 38, photocopying charges. Seems to be anomalies there from last year that have now been corrected. But it was $51.70 per page to photocopy. And then for a whole ream, it was only 50 cents. So I'm wondering if any organisations took advantage of that because it comes up again in the A3 pages, $63.60 per page and $1.25 for a ream. So.
Thank you. Thank you councillor for your observation of the most profitable business in the whole of Northern Tasmania.
Well, non-profitable, I'd say.
Councillor Micalletto.
Yes, I think the officers have done a great job in light of the current situation, having to basically change things around on a continuing basis. And we have obviously gone over this in much detail. So I think it's time to move forward and put it to the vote.
Thank you. With that, I'll take any questions, comments for or against. Councillor Brooks. Then I'll come to you councillor Barwick.
Thank you, Mayor. On page 41, it's just a question. So we're charging $14.50 for a zoning map on an A4 page, which is essentially a coloured printout out of Expanet. And yet in the printing page for a colour printing copy, it's substantially cheaper. Is that because it includes, and, and all these, on this whole page, is that because it includes staff time to actually go and have a look at that stuff? I just wanted to confirm that that's what the different, difference was.
Through the chair, I'll defer that one to the general manager primarily.
I'm happy for Cheryl to respond, but I suspect just councillor Brooks's comments have answered her own question.
But formally, so the manager of corporate services and finance, Cheryl, if you'd like to respond.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, councillor Brooks is correct. It's also council officers' time, whereas the photocopying is generally just a copy of a page that may be presented for photocopying by the customer or rate payer.
If I can then follow on from that question, do we then charge people to search for a map, GIS map or a zoning map if we email it to them? If the proponent of the fee is mainly due to the search time of the staff member, why, why do we not have a charge for an electronic copy provision?
So I noticed that the manager of the development and environment was gesturing. But again, as my customer, I'll go first through the chair to the general manager. If you'd like to then move it on to your team?
I'm happy to defer to the management, manager of development environment in a moment. I just wanted to add that whilst we haven't got a prescribed fee for information, it's electronically exchanged. We have used the act and the ability to charge fees for instances where one particular person or party is caused, has created some large resource burden on council. And that, there's evidence of that happening over this financial year for sure. So whilst they aren't prescribed, and I do, do take your point, that it almost has the same amount of start, well, has the same amount of staff resource involved, just on the hard copy or the, or the printout. But we have exercised that right under the act to charge in instances where there's been a lot of requests for electronic exchange of information. But the manager of development and environment may have something further to add.
I think just that the, those charges is probably, it's very, not very often used now. Once, it was used all the time. So I was taking up a lot of time. Now that we are mostly using electronic means, I guess by encouraging people to use electronic means, it's a cost benefit to those. So we, we really do only use that occasionally now.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Rex. Any other questions? I will hand that back to the deputy mayor to close.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. You were coming to me.
I beg your pardon, councillor Barwick. I'm sorry about that. I missed your hands. Yes, please proceed.
There's just some, it was quite interesting to hear that, yeah, we have gone through this at workshops. But when you get the documents sitting in front of you and you've got the time to go through them, we'll always pick up something when it's a council meeting date. Now, page 35 on the hard copy, which is different to the other copies that others have got, we've got the, the halls, the charges for the halls. I brought it up before. I'll do it again today. On the Hillwood Hall, there is no non-commercial per day use. There is a non-commercial per day use to use the other halls. The Georgetown community has it, the Weymouth community has it, and Hillwood doesn't have a per day use. Is there a reason it doesn't have a per day use like the others do?
Through the chair to the general manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No reason that I'm aware of, councillor Barwick. But as you'll see, having frozen all the rates and fees and charges from the following year, we haven't gone through an exhaustive exercise of revisiting the rates and charges per facility. So perhaps that's something we can do into the future.
What I'm saying is, how come we do have a non-commercial per day for Weymouth, for Bellingham, but Hillwood has not got one put in their document? That, that, they just need their per day, like Weymouth and Bellingham have, whatever that fee is. That's all I'm asking. It's not anything to do with any.
Through the chair, could I, I would suggest that we could revisit that. Doesn't have to be included in today's endorsement of the fees and charges budget, but it can be revisited specifically. But I can't answer you, councillor Barwick, with a good reason as to why there isn't that particular rate or fee included for that particular facility when it is done for other facilities. So thank you.
Again, on that basis, I do believe it is reasonable for us to continue with the motion as it stands. But.
Can I ask another question?
I'll ask you to pause, please. We will make a commitment to revisit this, to see whether or not something that we can include in terms of chargeable offerings for Hillwood.
And Mr. Chairman, the other question I would like to ask is, at the very end of this 43 on my document, refers to single recreational vehicle, self-contained, per one-day stay only at council-operated areas. Where, what other areas do we have other than the information centre?
Through the chair to the general.
That's council-operated, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Through the chair to the general manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. None that I'm aware of. But I'll defer to my colleagues in the management team to correct me on that if there is any others outside of visitor information centre.
Let's, if you will, please.
Yep, manager of development.
Go for it, Rex. You're on mute.
Okay, yeah, the, from time to time, the Bellingham group hire out there, Reckound. And I think that's the only other one that's used.
Thank you. Councillor Harris?
Yeah, we do have occasion to use Region Square as well.
Mr. Chairman, they are listed in their areas, like Bellingham does have about recreation, so does Regions Square in that season charges. That's why I didn't ask those.
Thank you, councillor Barwick. You've got any further questions? Or are you done?
Done. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barwick. There being no further questions, I will hand it back to the deputy to close. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll officially close. Nothing further to add.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll put it to a vote. All of those in favour of the officer's recommendation on item 13.3, please raise your hand. My word, it's a run. Another unanimous vote. Thank you very much. The motion is passed.
Yeah, yeah. Not going to be completely easy.
On a roll. What do you know? All right, item 13.4, that's the making of rates and charges for the 2020-2021 financial year. For those who are listening in on this, this meeting, this has been the backbone of the work around the disaster or the COVID-19 response pack. And I assure you, this has been examined in extraordinary level of detail. I thank the officers who prepared this recommendation, because I know that it really is the tip of the iceberg in terms of the volume of work that has been committed. The recommendation as it stands begins, if you have the printed pack on page 46. And I'll see if we can, I can find the page reference. But if you have the digital pack, it is showing as page, also 46. So we are consistent today. That is, 46. And it runs through to the end of page 50. As it stands, do I have a mover for the item 13.4 recommendation? Councillor Harris will be our mover. Thank you very much, councillor. Do I have a second, councillor Barak? Thank you. Councillor Harris?
Yeah, a lot of work's going on with this. And a lot of directly from the state government as to what we can and can't do. And we've avoided by that. So we are pretty much hands on on what we, we've been able to achieve any further. But we'll look to next year if everything's back to normal. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Barak?
Yeah, a lot of work is a gross understatement what's gone on here. It's been through in a lot of detail. There are charges or changes that need to be done for that recovery package as it's made previously stated. So I think nothing further to add. I think we need to listen to the other councillors for their comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up to statements, but I will lead in with my own copy. And that is to, just to share our rate payers that we did have a commitment to review our rating strategy. Rating strategy this year was unable to be changed due to the immediacy of the requirement to act, given the COVID-19 situation. I absolutely commit that when we are through this situation, the council will undertake a strategic review of our rating strategy. And we will put that to consultation, as was our commitment leading into this year before these unforeseen circumstances. So I thank everybody for their patience. We are trying to do the right thing by the community and the right thing by our state in their time of need. And that has really necessitated that we just pass through zero rate increase and zero change on the way we currently do it. With that, I'll hand over to anybody else. Yes, councillor Dawson?
I suppose poor times come along with some fairly strange measures that we've had to undertake. And we've always, you know, would like to have got to a position of zero rates increases. I mean, it's the holy grail for any council, I think. For us to be able to get to a position like this, in these times, a little bit of encouragement from the state government is probably helpful for our community. And let's hope that it takes a pressure off a few people that are on the margin. And let's continue on.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? Yes, councillor Parks?
Yeah, I concur with what's been said. Thanks, Mayor. Just, just to add, I think, you know, again, around the rating and that commitment that you mentioned, and the catch-ups that we've been considering and talking about as far as that consultation, how council proceeds with that is something, you know, that I want to make known to the rate payers that entrusted some measure of thought around that to myself when I got elected, that it is a part of the conversation and we will be taking that. And I know all councils will be taking that very seriously, and to ensure that it's equitable and the council is sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There being no further questions or comments, I will pass it back to councillor Harris to close.
Yeah, just in closing, I'd like to congratulate Cheryl Hyde on the massive amount of work she's achieved with her team. Don't cry, Cheryl. I saw that. Yeah. And we've got one more to go. And she was instrumental in that too, along with other department managers. So well done. And thank you for your diligence.
Thank you, deputy. Well said. With that, I'll put that to a vote. All those in favour of item 13.4 recommendation, please raise your hand. We have Keiza Barwick. We have, I believe, another unanimous motion. Thank you very much. Right. Item 13.5 relates to budgets and budget estimates for the 2020 and 2021 year. The recommendation is printed on page 69. And it is that the council adopt operating budget estimates prepared by the general manager pursuant to section 82 of the Local Government Act as presented within the body of this report. Again, this is comprehensive. It has been debated at length. Do I have a mover for item 13.5? Thank you. Councillor Mason is on the move. Thank you. Second, which is councillor Parks. Thank you very much. Councillor Mason?
Another document that's well put together by some very good people. The comments about all these budget estimates and financial paperwork will probably basically be the same, because it's all very well done. This one contains a lot of detail, a lot of work. But the real challenge goes back to our general manager to make it all work. Thank you.
Well said. Councillor Parks?
No pressure at all. Yeah, I guess this is really the result of the freeze on rates and council working very, very hard in the background to ensure that we do meet our service requirements, our expectations of the community, and that we, we enable ourselves to be there in another 12 months to continue, and that we are financially sustainable through this. There was, I know, there's probably other councillors going to say, this is missing, that's missing. And, and we had this debate quite vigorously. You know, there's a lot of things in there that I'd hoped myself, different things for the community that we could put in here. In an ideal world, we, we could have put those measures forward, but it is what it is. It's, it's been a tough road to get to this. And, and I'm sure the community understands that this was not done lightly. And what, what is before us is provisions that enable us to continue on successfully. And we've got so much to look forward to in the coming 12 months, two years. And I'm sure once this COVID period is over and done with the pandemic stuff, that we can actually start to get into that recovery mode. And Georgetown, I'm sure, from all accounts that I'm hearing and anecdotal stuff from interested parties for this part of the Tasmania, we're going to do okay. You know, and a lot of people here on the screen are going to be working damn hard to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll open up to any questions, comments. Yes, councillor Dawson?
I think, well, a couple of things I'd like to highlight, I suppose, rate payers in this budget, or set of budget estimates, is that for events and sponsorships this year, we've pretty much made permanent some line items that normally community groups will need to come, cap in hand to council with every year. Go through the, the red tape of council to kind of get support each year for basic things that our community should support. And we have this year. One is the folk festival. That's covered $7,780 plus CPI, plus the fee remission of $2,500. That's in as a line item all the time now. Dining in night, fee remission for the hall hire and $750. And so that's around about $970 all up for that event. Antic Day, $1,500 in, plus in kind for the hall hire and road closure. That's something that we've always had to budget for, but we, we never quite got it right. There's always things at the RSL Club and others had to come cap in hand to try to resolve. There's Remembrance Day, in-kind support of $350. So that's covered off as well. Five Grade Social Club lolly run of $400, that's covered. And the seniors contribution of $1,000. So that's covered as well.
Thank you very much, councillor Dawson. Any other speakers? Councillor Barwick?
Mr. Chairman, I have quite a few questions to ask, if you'd bear with me. But I should say that the comments that councillor Dawson has made and added up, but he didn't add up for the ANZAC Day, council does support ANZAC Day every year, and has, will never ever actually not support ANZAC Day. But to us, that's $3,260 for the day. So we share that, we share our event sponsorship money around quite well, actually. I'll move on now to the questions that I have to ask under 13.5, operational grants, which is my page is 53. I don't know the difference between mine and yours. But my page is 53, where it refers to on five, the repayment of half of the federal grants assistance. And we've got a figure at the bottom saying the carried forward cash of $967,171 is available to fund the 2020-21 budget. But if you go back over to page, over to page 59, it refers to advice as yet to be received on total federal assistance grant 2021. And that has that $967171 figure in it. And Cheryl, please, you, Mr. Chairman and the general manager, explain that to me.
Through the chair firstly to the general manager?
I'll defer to the manager of corporate services and finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor Barwick. Councillor Barwick, the federal government provides the state government with their financial assistance grant funding for the whole of the state. And that has happened. They have prepaid half of what they predict will be our allocation for the 2021 year. However, the final calculations have not been released. And so there is a possibility that that. released. And so there is a possibility that that final figure may change. So it might not be double the 961,000. It could be be amended. And sometimes there's amendments against prior years and things like that. So they take into a lot of into consideration a lot of components. And as a result of all of that, we haven't as yet been advised of the final figure for 2021. So that may well change.
Thank you so much for that, Cheryl. Now, the other one that I'm going, number six on page 53, is capital grants and refers to Regent Square Development and the Georgetown Mountain Bike Trail that we have all funds received, include all funds in our capital grants received. The question is here, have we received the $4.4 million for the mountain bike trail? Because, well, I asked that question, I won't say the reason, I'll just ask that question for that.
Sorry. Through the chair to the general manager.
I'm happy for the major corporate services to respond to the all questions relating to this particular agenda item, if you like, Mr. Mayor.
Lock her in. Over to you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So councillor Barwick, now the the mountain bike trail and the Regent Square redevelopment have both are both on a milestone based program. We have reached milestones on those items. And so there has been some funding allocated to the mountain bike trail, but not the whole of the amount of the of the grant funding. And that will be forthcoming as we reach the milestones.
So can you, with your with your milestones, is the milestones, have we started milestones on the mountain bike trail?
Yes, we have. So the first milestone has been met with the mountain bike trail and and the funding around that milestone is is being met.
Thank you. Now, the next question, I can go straight through to Cheryl, Mr. Chair.
Through myself, please, to the chair, to the manager of corporate services and finance.
Yes. Is that okay through you, sir? For me to ask another one?
You need to pose the question to me, and I prefer you to do it that way. Thank you.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking you. Fringe benefit tax, where do I find the fringe benefit tax in this budget estimates?
Sure.
I don't have the page number on off the top of my head. It would be under, it would be under employee costs, councillor Barwick, but it's not specifically a line item in the budget. It comes under employee costs. How come we don't have it? We always had a specific line item for the fringe benefit tax. And as soon as the questions were asked about it, the council took it out of the agenda, took it out of our financial year allocation, which I have a problem with. But I do notice that our employee costs have gone up by $171,616, $1,000 this year. So it's included in there. Correct, that's correct.
Well, can we have a line item?
I'm going to ask you to pause there because you've exceeded your five minute allocation for questions.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, who says I have five minutes of questions?
The local government meetings.
No, no, it does not.
Five minutes allocated for questions.
No, sorry, I'm, I've got lots of questions.
Well, let's.
And I warned you of that.
No, absolutely. And I'm certainly, I'm happy to do that. But I also want to make sure that anybody else who has a question has an opportunity to frame a question.
Well, they can talk after me, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, that's not the way that the meeting procedures work, councillor Barwick. The meeting procedures say that you're allocated five minutes at a time. And with the chairs, and again, I've got to be careful there because I don't want to be quoted technically, but.
You're quoting yourself in the tape.
With the chair's permission, you can, he can give you an extension. So I'm asking you to pause. I'm looking to any of the other councillors who may have a question. If there are no other questions, I may then opt to allow you to resume.
Mr. Chairman, I thought that if you asked, if I was talking to a motion, I'm not talking to a motion, I'm asking questions about the item that we are going to vote on.
All right. Well, let me find you the actual meeting procedures, because I think I'm quite correct on this one. So we'll, I tell you what we'll do is we'll adjourn. Since it's a technicality, we'll adjourn. The time now is 2:15. And at 2:20, we will resume. And I'll give you an extract from the meeting procedures act, which dictates your time allocations for both speaking to and asking questions.
I have the copy over here.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll put the recording on pause. Thank you very much.
Now, so just to confirm, councillor Barwick, you are absolutely correct. You may ask as many questions as you like. Please proceed.
Thank you for your apologies for having to go off and check that out again. Where did I get up to? The questions. The other question I asked is, have we, the question I'm asking here in the budget is solicitors fees. Have we got a set fee that we're putting in our budget this year for legal fees?
Are you happy for me to answer that, Mayor?
I'm asking through the chair, it's up to the chair.
Please proceed. Sorry. And you may lie as directly with councillor Barwick.
Thank you. Councillor Barwick, there are set fee budget allocation put in for solicitors' fees in the budget as we do it every year. They remain unchanged from last year.
Yeah. Well, as I don't, didn't have an operational budget, like councillor Parks couldn't find what he was looking for for the rap grant funding, because we didn't actually get a spreadsheet of the operational budget. That's why I'm asking these questions. Now, the last question on this, Mr. Chairman, the Georgetown Fire Brigade Social Club lolly run, we had $400 put in that. Can you tell me, please? My question to you is, when we had the document came to the workshop, in that workshop, it stated that that was to be part of Hillwood, Weymouth and Pipers River were to be involved with part of that $400. Could you verify that for me, please?
General manager?
It's through you, Mr. Chair. That is certainly the intent, councillor Barwick.
Thank you so much. I'm finished with my questions. Thank you for your time.
If I may, through you, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that we have covered off on councillor Barwick's question prior to a German around FBT. It is incorporated into the employee costs listed. We can provide that more specifically, you know, obviously at a later date to councillor Barwick and all of councillors. And we also report on this as well. So there is a reporting requirement that council needs to adhere to with regard to FBT.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cheryl. Was there something you wanted to add in there?
Just one thing, Mayor, if I might, one of, at the workshop, we were provided, provided a full list of budget items line by line. So some of the questions may be answered from a previously provided document that is not more of a summary document that we have in the budget here.
Thank you very much. Are there any further questions or statements, councillor Harris?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just an observation that we've had a rise of $100,000 in employee on costs or employee costs. That a lot of that would have been, would be being taken up by the projects that we have in place. So the funding to a certain degree would come out of, some of it would have come out of the mountain bike track and other out of the Regent Square. And there'd be quite a bit of those extra wages on people who have been put on for those particular projects. So not necessarily full-time ongoing costs. Would that be correct?
It's for you, Mr. Chair. I think it's in part correct. So some of our salaries are capitalized against the different grant programs and others are operational as presented and things like the healthy Georgetown has a position coming with it. And that's certainly included in those increased employee costs. So that you are right in saying that some of this is externally funded.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may ask a question to the general manager through yourself?
Yes.
I come today a bit cap in hand because with my placemaking committee hat on as well, as you were aware, that would everyone would be aware, we had a budget allocation for this financial year, this current financial year of $50,000. And we had been substantially commencing a particular project. But because of COVID, it really impacted our ability to move on that. And I am aware, because I have sought previous advice, that the funding may not be able to be carried forward. But given the impact of COVID and the extent of where we've got the project ready to sort of go, I wondered if I could ask the general manager what his thoughts might be around ways that we may be able to still still utilise that money, even how advanced our project is.
To the general manager.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your question, councillor Brooks. Well, there's a number of avenues that could be sought, I suppose. I would probably recommend to council, given the late stage that we are, or council is at in considering its budget, that, you know, clearly any operational money that hasn't been expended as was budgeted, which is the case for the placemaking committee, who have done a lot of work, but were obviously impacted by COVID restrictions, as many others were, that that surplus could be used to fund, you know, a project or capital works, you know, relating or coming from the place making committee. And I am aware of one such project, which was well supported and has progressed to a point where it's ready for council consideration. And maybe that occurs in July. And perhaps the report that council considers in July would point to the fact that the unexpended funds from 1920 could be utilized in a capital program to fund such a project. Does that make sense?
Well, we, yeah, we'd be really appreciative if if we could receive some consideration from council due to the circumstances.
Well, I'd be through you, Mr. Mayor, to make a commitment as from an officer's point of view, to put such a report to council in July for council consideration.
Look, I think that that's more than reasonable. And given the circumstances, nothing that the placemaking committee could reasonably have foreseen. But having said that, next year, when these eventual circumstances have passed, I suspect you may find a little bit more of a hardened posture than absolutely this year. And please proceed.
Thank you.
With that, there being no further questions or speakers, I will hand it back to councillor Mason to close.
Thank you, Mayor. Some good robust conversations about 13.5. Quite happy now to move the motion.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will put item 13.5 to a vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. We have councillor Keiza, councillor Brooks, councillor Harris, councillor Barrett Clark, councillor Dawson, councillor Michelletta, councillor Parks and councillor Mason for all those opposed to the motion, councillor Barwick is opposed to the motion. The motion is carried. Right, that leads us on to item 13.6, the Capital Works Programme for 2020, 2021. And the office recommendation, for those who are working from the printed pack, appears on page 76, that the council adopt the capital works expenditure for 2020, 2021 financial includes of the estimated expenditure for carry forward capital works as presented in the body of the report. Do I have a move, please? Councillor Harris, thank you very much. Do I have a second? We have councillor Parks. Councillor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. There you go, gentlemen. The job's on. Let's go and get it done.
Well said. Thank you. Councillor Parks?
Yeah, it's probably, that's probably well said, Tim, because there's not much more to say. The discussion prior to this really frames this also. So yeah, I commend the motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers for or against councillor Dawson?
I would encourage ladies and gentlemen, rather than just gentlemen, because I think this is something that quite a few ladies have had good and thorough input into. And I'm supportive of how we've got, where we've got with their assistance as well. It hasn't been just us blokes.
Very, very well said. Thank you very much. It is an apt and appropriate correction. Well done. Thank you. Councillor Barwick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a lot of questions again on the capital budget, capital budgets.
Please proceed.
The, the Hillwood Hall acoustics, the number one, which is listed item 1556, on the, one of the pages, I think if you look under your capital works, I've got to find it, the first folder, they've got it listed as $30,784. Now, that acoustic should be a carried forward, but they've added a vinyl floor onto it. So that's put the price up. Now, it's five years where been trying to get that through the council to be addressed. And then you go to your next page, we've got that same number, 1556, as there's $8,773 as a carried forward. Now, so there's nearly $39,000 just to do the roof plus put a bit of lino down. I'm concerned that we're doing it, they're not carrying, the lino should be on the capital works here. One of the acoustic should be on the follow forward because it's been a follow forward. I can't find, I have two sheets of papers and work order numbers that I cannot find in this document that we are passing forward this year. Some of the councillors around this table remember that I did this quite some years back. And there were lots of things that were missed off, like the one today that we spoke about at lunchtime. But that's, I'm not going to bring that. The one, item 1646, the Memorial Hall Concrete Pillars, $15,000 is in the carried forward, right? And yet it's.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I may, sorry, sorry, councillor Barwick, can we handle the Hillwood one first? Is there a question relating to the allocation?
Yep.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. What's the specific question? I see that there is a work order reference in the Capital Works Programme, page 73, and it's about the fourth or fifth row down, work order 1556, stage one, is part of the project. Stage two is annotated as including the completion of the acoustics and the installation of a vinyl floor, which was discussed at workshop, the vinyl floor when it was inspected to be found in a state of disrepair. And that equates to 30,784. On page, on page 75, you have the carry forwards, the proposed carry forwards, which includes an allocation of 8,773 to go to the same project, which is the completion of the acoustics, is my read of that document. And I noticed a couple of hands up, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, could you ask the general manager, I'm not sure what is, what is in a state of repair, disrepair?
Wow. All right, this can go really, really off the rails here, councillor Barwick. I mean, these are fair questions. But if you want to get into detailed semantics.
No.
Not like this wasn't discussed beforehand. But so what are you specifically trying to qualify?
Well, we've, my question was, we've got. Well, my question was, we've got 30,784 on the capital works for this year, right? Now, it's not classed as, it's renewal or replacement, right? Now, the comment on there says, stage one, which is stage two includes completion of acoustics. We haven't even done anything with the $10,000 that we've been carrying and going forward every year for the last five years to do those acoustics up at Hillwood. Now, on the next page, now they've included a vinyl floor, which when I questioned through the council management, I was told that staff member noticed that the floor wanted doing, but they don't seem to think the floor needs doing, because the room's never been used. But then when you turn the page over again, you've got your capital works carried forward, and you've got 1556 as carried forward, currently exploring options. Now, we've been currently exploring options for a long, long time, and we've used $5,227 of a $15,000, $20,000 budget to explore options. And I just wonder how long that's going to sit there to go. It's like the sailcloth out at Bellingham, that is no longer in this budget nor as a carried forward.
So councillor, I distinctly remember us discussing this point at length, and you, I'm sure you recall that in the workshop, councillor David Richardson gave some details as to the process that they were going through to ascertain the works required for the acoustics. I think we even had a debate, I recall, where Steve Miller was involved, there was an independent contractor and consultant who is involved, I'll get to you next, Greg. So again, this really seems like we're just dredging up the same information that's already been presented. You know there are delays, David is presenting here saying that the work is looking to be performed.
No.
Not really sure what you plan to achieve through another round of re-investigation.
I have no idea what you're trying to say, Mr Chairman.
I can't take a question from you, Greg, because councillor Barwick is in the middle of her question. So I'll hand it over again. Why don't we go straight to the manager of works and infrastructure? And David, you recall the situation, I'm sure, in detail? Do you want to shed some light on it?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, look, the delay with those works is the, it does sit with the consultants that I've been dealing with. I've been dealing with two different ones. There seems to be some competing, I guess, questions around the actual install, but I started those discussions prior to Covid, and I needed to meet the consultants on site, obviously, both of them, to get the different views, and that put a delay in place due to Covid. I'm not using it as an excuse, that's genuinely what happened. So hence the reason for the carry forward, and I just want to ensure that, you know, whatever we go forward with is the correct decision, and I don't want to get it wrong. That's why I've asked for it to be carried forward. And some more funding in there, because the indication that I've got from both the consultants was that the figure that we had in there was inadequate.
Whatever the figure is inadequate, I know that Hillwood are paying half of it. They have, I noticed on each month it's had waiting for Hillwood donation towards it. Anyway.
That may well be the case, but we work on the pool allocation of the project.
I also have a question on, I do. Now, the swimming pool heating upgrade, 1647, work order 1647. Anyone looking for that? Swimming pool heating upgrade. Now, we've carried forward 53,864, should have been a carried forward, because there was no work done. Now, what life on the heating? I can't find where that, I must be on the second page, carried forward. There you go, I can't find that carried forward, the heating of the swimming pool.
Through you, Mr Mayor, if I may, on page 75, on one, two, three, four, six lines down.
I found it, yeah. Now, it's come up as 188,240 now dollars, that is in there, that item number. Now, is that including the 53,864 carried forward? That 188?
Please proceed, David, if you've got an answer.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. No, that's, so the $53,000 was in this financial year's budget for the purpose of providing some new covers and rollers due to work health and safety issues that was identified by the pool contractor there that runs it. So we've endeavoured to carry that $53,000 forward, as well as include a new allocation of $188,000 in this financial year's budget, to incorporate a whole new pool heating system and rollers and covers as well.
Can you tell me where that 53,000 is on this document? You said it's in, I did ask, was it inclusive of the 188? Was it in there? But you're saying no, you carried it forward.
It's on the, yes, correct councillor Barwick, it's in the proposed carry forwards item or work ticket item number 1647 on the carry forwards.
Yeah.
So, Mr Mayor, if I may, through you and to councillor Barwick and to others, just for a point of clarity, the capital works programme listed on 73 is new funding. It's not inclusive of any carry forward. The funding, no, the funding on, or the list on page 75 is a specific list to carry forwards. This particular project you're referring to, we discussed at workshop, was about carrying forward the pool cover in order to go out to a tender, to try and solve two problems, or try and procure two solutions to the one problem, which is about water heating. So we've carried one to combine the two to go out to market and try and achieve savings at market by combining those two solutions to one, if that makes sense. We've also discussed previously around the current contractor who's operating the facility has approached myself and David and the manager of corporate services on multiple occasions with some sincere angst around the viability of continuing operations with a large increase in utility costs, namely electricity and associated costs with the heating of that site under the current contract arrangements. So that's the proposal being put forward. One is a new expenditure on page 73, and the other is a carry forward on page 75. Making the combined total somewhere therefore in the order of, you know, $230,000, $240,000 combined for that facility.
Through you, Mr Chair. I went through our audit panel documents with the budget documents, which we've done, both had both these documents given to us or to the chair panel or the audit panel. And there are a lot of items that I am going to have to write up, ask that they be presented to the council for explanation to the council as to what ones haven't been done, where the funding's gone to, et cetera, because there's a lot of money that I've got sitting here that I can't get answers. I do understand now about Leam Road disappearing off the list when Leam Road was a big development here, that now $400,000's gone on to Dowrington Road, because there was $335,000 from Dowrington Road carried forward from last year. That's there. So what I might need to do, Mr Chairman, instead of going through this is to bring the, send these through into the council for everyone to look at and have, you know, make their comments on that, because I just, I can't figure out how, look, there's no recognition or where these jobs have gone.
I can make a recommendation that you please call a meeting with Cheryl Hyde and the General Manager before the council meeting, if you've got specific questions, so that you can clarify these things. As much as it's been incredibly interesting to revisit these items again in a public forum, I think it would be more expedient for every participant's time if you could please just call that meeting as a precursor to it, it would be greatly appreciated. Councillor Dawson, you have a question which you've been holding off on.
I'd say much a question, probably more a clarification. I'd say that any of the councillors that have been around here over the last five or six years would be well aware. We had a situation a few years back where we were looking between a deficit of $1.2 to $1.8 million. We subsequently had a review of the operations, and the budget saw a lion drawn in the sand. The budget that was the budget was thrown out. We started again. Everything that was on the table was off the table, and we got to a situation where all those legacy projects were abandoned, and we started again. When we have councillors come to the table, and I think quite mischievously, saying that there've been carry forward projects for five years that haven't been actioned, that's wrong. Three years ago, we had a review, and all of that was wiped out, and we started again. Some of them things have gradually come back through good advice and community consultation with the progress associations, et cetera, but the rest of them are still on the back burner, because we fixed our budget and we're in a position now where we're able to roll through and start to action some of these things. When I hear all the time that budget, that some councillors come out with comments that we haven't done these things, they haven't been done for five years, 10 years, they're on the list, where have they dropped off to? They were all dropped off in two, like three years ago. And anyone that has been here would know that. I'd like to understand or probably get some support from people like councillor Parks, the deputy mayor, maybe even the general manager that was at the time that now sits on council, because all those projects were dropped off and we started again. It's not like we're doing the wrong thing and throwing all those projects out and trying to mislead people, they just aren't there anymore. Some of them have come back, but not all of them.
Thank you. Councillor Dawson, any further comments, speakers? Right, let me, councillor Barwick?
Sorry, councillor Barwick. Mr Mayor, I also saw councillor Harris's hand raised.
Fantastic. We'll start with councillor Harris. Thank you, councillor Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. In support of Greg, a lot of these things have been dropped off previously, and some have remained on a back burner, some have had their funding carried over for several years, because more funding has been needed and hasn't been able to be allocated. So it's, I know it may be a bone of contention that it hasn't happened as yet on some of these items, but all we can say is that over these, it's been good governance not to overtax ourselves financially, because we had to come back from a fairly desperate situation. So, and now the fact that we've got more money than we can actually do these things with, I just commend them to be done, so we can stop the bickering. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Barwick, you were next in the queue.
Just what I wanted, one question I wanted to ask, Mr Chairman, where are we at? Have we got money in the budget for that boat ramp out at Weymouth? Which is quite a big problem.
To the matter of infrastructure and works?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. It's quite timely. I'm actually having a meeting with Marsh tomorrow in Hobart to discuss a way forward with that project. I've received the report from the consultants on the condition, and I will be able to update council after that meeting tomorrow on a way forward.
To provide a little bit of background for those people who are attending, a detailed third-party report was circulated, which has been provided to all councillors who are now aware that it is a far more complicated piece of work than originally envisaged, with far more, far higher cost implications as well. So I'm pretty sure everybody is actually aware of that fact. Any further questions?
Councillor Parks, Mr Mayor, had his hand up as well.
Thank you. Sorry, councillor Parks.
Thanks, Mayor and GM. I was really just gonna, councillor Dawson said stick in support with his comments, and councillor Harris chimed in there. It is really difficult to listen to long conversations about almost mischievous behaviour that is being alluded to, and to go through such a struggle, I mean, we put a general manager into a hot seat, which was an enviable task, and I understand that councillor Brooks might want to talk to that, but we were at a position, again, just to reinforce what councillor Dawson said, where we had a capital works budget where we achieved less than, I think it was 9% of what was on that list. We were in dire, and where we find ourselves today is not an accident. I just wanted to, as he asks for support, give support.
Thank you very much. Without, if there are any, aren't any further questions or speakers, I will move it back to councillor Harris to close. Councillor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I will close and in closing, commend the budget to our workforce to do their damnedest with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well said, and we will put that to a vote. All those in favour of item 13.6, the Capital Works Programme for 2020, 2021, as it stands, please raise your hand. We have councillor Keazar, we have councillor Harris, we have councillor Brooks, we have councillor Barrowclough, councillor Dawson, councillor Micalletta, councillor Parks, councillor Mason, and opposed, we have councillor Barwick. Thank you very much. The motion is carried. Right. Item 14 petitions, there are none. Item 15, we do have a notice of a motion from councillor Brooks. Obviously, it is moved by councillor Brooks. I think it's a very, very interesting motion. Can I call for a second though, for item 15.2? We have councillor Dawson. Councillor Brooks?
Did we get a second, Mayor?
Councillor Dawson was your second.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't hear that. Appreciate it. So yes, so last week, the Premier and Minister for the Prevention of Family Violence, the Honourable Peter Gatton, launched the new Tasmanian online platform Safe From Violence, which aims to be a central source of information about family and sexual violence. It identifies that domestic and family violence is a serious social health and safety issue for all levels of Australian government and social agencies to act on as a matter of urgency. Tasmania has an action plan for family and sexual violence called Safe Homes, Safe Families, and I propose that we develop our own strategy which aligns with the state's plan. Domestic and sexual violence is a very real issue for Georgetown, but mindful not to stigmatise our region, because domestic family and sexual violence is an issue for every community, and it affects- And it affects any person irrespective of age, gender, socio-economic status, cultural background. But we know that certain groups within the community may be at a greater risk of experiencing domestic and sexual and family violence. Local governments are uniquely placed to influence social change and that reduces violence in the community. Particularly as local governments are in touch with people across their lifespan from early years through to their senior years. Local governments play a crucial role in driving change and preventing domestic and family violence in communities. And having a strategic plan would outline how we were going to do that, working with our residents and support groups and community agencies and government agencies. So council's responsibility lies in educating the community on the services available to prevent domestic and family violence and including supporting local partnerships to tackle the issue. To address any concerns that we do not have the funds available to commit to addressing this, I would put you that we cannot afford not to address it. A KPMG report petition in two thousand and sixteen reports that the total cost of violence against, well, this says about women and children. It was more than twenty two million dollars and that was in two thousand and sixteen. It then goes on to divide up at the average, nineteen percent of that, or the average of nineteen percent of that costs fall on the state, is a burden on the state. But more importantly, twenty nine percent of those costs actually impacts the community during, within which those people live. So it has an impact on us whether we're aware of it or not. As a council, we already spend considerable time, energy and resources, either directly or with a community service partner, addressing issues such as homelessness, raising educational outcomes, unemployment, under skilled workers, smoking, substance abuse, mental health and suicide. These have a social, financial and even environmental impact on our community. The majority of those actions and activities have been in response to societal issues. And we need to understand that many studies make it clear that there is a direct link between those societal issues and trauma as in, when you're young or just trauma in general. And often that trauma is violence and sexual violence. By establishing a strategy will not only formalise our existing commitment, but also provide some parameters and guidance to community support service partners and government agencies such as Police, Safe Homes, Safe Families, Family Violence Counseling Service, St Vincent de Paul, Salvation Army, Catholic Clear, the Child and Family Centre at the Hub, Laurel House and Neighbourhood House, they're just, they're just a few. In addition to this, this morning I've been contacted by Tricia Miles, our watch, who is an Our Watch Senior Advisor to Tasmania. Our Watch is a national leader in the primary prevention of violence against women and their children in Australia. Our Watch have become aware that we were considering this motion today and she called me to pass on her congratulations to council to shine great leadership by considering developing a domestic and domestic family violence and sexual violence strategy. And she's actually offered Our Watch's assistance to help us develop that, which is incredible. She's also given me permission or asked me to read out the following. Tasmania Government's Safe Home Families Communities, Tasmania's Action Plan for Family and Sexual Violence two thousand and nineteen to twenty two has an increased focus on primary prevention and includes a new partnership with Our Watch, a national organisation that is leading Australia's work to prevent violence against women and children. This also includes men as well. Women and children are often mentioned because about ninety five percent of it, the violence occurs against women and children. But men are included as well. Part of Our Watch role is to share evidence-based information, resources and tools, as well as prevention and gender equality work and opportunities with government and non-government sectors and the broader community. And as such, they're working on developing a local government toolkit, which will work with and complement a strategy if we developed one. The local government toolkit is funded through the Australian Government and it is a key action of the Third National Action Plan to reduce violence. It is a co-designed tool and has resources for local government to engage with business, sporting organisations, community groups to promote action against violence and engage all levels of business to lead and collaborate on initiatives to drive reduction in violence across the board. So the toolkit aims to provide evidence-based and practical resources that guide local government and staff in designing, implementing and evaluating primary prevention initiatives and strategies that are relevant to our local government area and that meet the needs of our community. It has involved the Local Government Association of Australia and Local Government Association reps in it have developed and are testing five local governments across Australia, but none in Tasmania, so it could be us. And that is something that we discussed this morning. So the toolkit recognises that local governments are uniquely placed to influence social change in the community. Particularly, and as I said before, particularly because we see people from when they're born and to when they're aged, until when they're older. So councillors, today I'm asking you to support the vulnerable members of our community, knowing that there are other partners or other organisations watching and offering to assist us develop this. And that we would look after those vulnerable members in our community by reducing domestic family and sexual violence. Thank you for listening to my speech.
Well said. Thank you. The second.
How can I follow that up? Well said councillor Brooks. I think in our whole society these days, you know, it takes a village to raise a child. And sometimes the ladies, the women, and sometimes the guys need support in this community and to be able to get there, I think. To be able to, and to be safe, to be able to have a social violence strategy headed up by our, our own council. Demonstrates our leadership, our state leadership and probably even our federal leadership in a way that there had been, we're probably the only in the first smaller regional council to action something like this. And we've seen that Brisbane City Council, and I suppose I was hesitant to support to start with, only from the fact that Brisbane City Council is a very partisan kind of a council. There are Greens and Labor and Liberal and National Party members and that sort of thing. And they, they're all working on a political platform. I think what we need to be able to do with our strategy would be look a little bit closer to home. We know people, like people that are in the, in the community, whether it be community associations or whatever, we know someone's doing it tough. And sometimes it's pretty obvious, even with some of the media that's on the TV at the moment about elder abuse and that type of thing. We've got to lower our eyes a little bit and have a little bit, a little bit closer to home rather than looking at the, the big sphere of things. And look after those that are close by, you know, and this is probably the start for our community. So I commend it.
An insidious societal problem indeed. With that, I will open up the floor to any speakers for or against comments. We'll start with councillor Mason, then on to councillor Parks. Councillor Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I will fully support this motion and I'll tell the little story why. In our cricket side, we had two police officers who played with us. One of them was transferred to St Helens or asked for a transfer. And that made St Helens, they had five police officers. And we, Joystein, had thirteen. And I said to him, well, St Helens is up and about place, how come they've got five, we've got thirteen? He said, family violence, simple. That's why they're for police required in Joystein. So something like this will be, can help everybody. Happy to support it.
Thank you councillor Mason. Councillor Parks.
Thanks, Mayor. I think, well, I congratulate councillor Brooks for bringing this forward. I think this is a really important topic. Everyone deserves a safe home and a safe community. I do wonder if we should start our journey collectively. Everyone here has been on a different journey of knowledge. I do wonder if councillor Brooks and councillor Dawson might concede the first step probably should be a workshop. Where, not a traditional workshop, but a workshop for understanding for us in the, in this genre and this topic. And where we can be better placed to understand where we need to get to and what our journey should look like. And what, as as a council, frame an expectation of a strategy around and what, what those goals of that strategy, strategy should be. And I think rather than just pass a motion to say develop one, I think if we're more informed, then we can assist the process more deeply. And include perhaps others in the community as outlined by councillor Brooks. There is other service agencies in the community that I'm sure would gladly help inform us on that journey. And then that would frame for council offices and those putting together the strategy, a more clearer, defined route for those. And because not forgetting there's budget implications behind everything that we do and to have something clear to start with. I think probably for, for me is, is a better place to start than just saying, let's develop a strategy. If we understand what a strategy, I can't say, and contains for everybody on that journey. And we're all up to speed on that journey and understand and have police officers come and talk to us about. And service agencies can talk to us about what issues they're seeing in our community specifically. I think it will make this a really valuable strategy rather than just having a strategy. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. So we have two in the queue. So we have councillor Barwick first and then I'm going to come back to the deputy. And after that, I'm going to have my say. Councillor Barwick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Look, I agree with this. What I would like to say is writing a new strategy or plan is a great idea. And probably a little bit supporting what Peter's saying, councillor Park, sorry. But what is needed is a cultural change in the community. So that whatever happens, we must involve the community in developing this strategy or plan. I don't believe we should just impose it on the community. We need to take them along with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Harris.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Congratulations councillor Barwick on the initiative of this project. On a bit of the ilk of councillor Parks, that we actually need to have our own discussion about it and bring in local people with the knowledge to inform us further. I downloaded and read that document from Brisbane City Council last night. It's fairly involved, but it seems to put the onus back onto the state government almost entirely. Which is, if we're developing a strategy for our area, is not necessarily, we might want some funding out of them, but that's what it seemed to do quite a lot. And also there's a, if we stand up and get right out there and say that we're doing this, it's putting a connotation that there is a lot of, and there probably is. But it's actually putting it out in the public, there's a lot of domestic violence here. So I'd like to see it back at a workshop and I think I'll move a procedural motion to take it back to workshop and further discussions.
I'd second that.
But can, this point of order, Mr. Chair, can a motion of a councillor's be moved to a workshop?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any, absolutely. Any motion can be moved. And in this instance, we do have a procedural motion. So the procedural motion in this case is a motion to defer. As the deputy has said, it's a motion to defer.
Discuss at workshop at length so that we can develop the strategy more suited to our area rather than Brisbane, which has got fairly violent there. And Brisbane is a city council, it's got eight thousand employees, which is considerably more than we've got there, I guess, probably so.
Well, let's. Exactly. Let's treat it like a standard procedural motion. I'll have my word afterwards.
You won't have anything that's finished.
Motion is raised by councillor Harris, which is to defer. We have indication from councillor Parks that he is seconding the motion to defer, which case it moves immediately to a vote.
Thank you.
There was no further discussion. We put that in to a vote. All of those in favour of deferring this motion to workshop, please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, we have councillor Kezer, we have councillor Baraklock, councillor Harris, we have councillor Parks. All those who are opposed to the motion to move to defer. We have councillor Mason, we have councillor Micalletto, we have councillor Dawson, we have councillor Brooks. Councillor Barwick, have a look, cast your vote.
Somebody muted me.
Yeah, but that's where you raise your hand, right?
Well, no, if you cut me, come up on the screen, you'll be muted.
Yeah, so you're voting to move the motion to defer.
Sorry, no, I'm not.
So councillor Barwick, you'll just clarify, you're moving against the motion to defer?
Yes.
Moving against the motion. Good. In that case, the procedural motion was defeated. So I was next in the queue.
But how many votes were there?
I, well, it was five to four. So the procedural motion was defeated by five to four. So we continue with the current motion that councillor Brooks has raised, item fifteen point one, and I'm next in the queue. So, and then councillor Micalletto is next in the queue. So I think you've kind of got to be careful here as a matter of perception. I think that if you oppose an issue as insidious as domestic violence, you know, I think that you really would come across as being pretty hardened to a reality that faces a section of our community on the day, on a daily basis. And it truly is a bastard of an insidious issue, you know, a really, I am, I almost shake my head in despair at the hell that some people have to live through with this, you know, this issue. But I do look at the motion with a lot of questions. And again, I appeal to councillor Brooks in the same sense that councillor Parks and others have appealed. I very much, I would like to do this, but mostly from a lens of understanding what the implications are for us from an organisational perspective. And whether or not we can make the impact that you desire through this. And what the, what the, sorry councillor Barwick, you, now you're on mute, thank you. And what the implications would be in terms of our operating cost, what the implications would be in terms of our capacity to mesh with other state service providers, et cetera, et cetera. I think in all the things that we do, the lens that I cast as the chair across all of these deliberations is primarily, number one, does the council have sufficient data, evidence and facts to make an informed decision which is going to best serve the community? Now, motively, absolutely. I'm a hundred percent in support of this, but I really don't see the amount of evidence and facts that would allow the rest of the council to make a data-driven, informed decision. I'm reluctant to, reluctant to support a motion that will put us on a path that insists that we formulate a strategy where we might be best served to support state's agencies. I simply do not know the data, the background, the facts and the evidence to make that decision. And as much as it's an issue that I passionately am in support of, I really would prefer it if as a collective, we returned, we informed and armed ourselves and we took the most appropriate course available to us to get the best results. Councillor Dawson, you are next.
I've just got a question through the chair of the GM and it's around the, I suppose, the structure and the process of what designing and creating this kind of a strategy would be of that process. Although the motion to defer to a workshop was defeated, I still think that there's, should be room for councillors and officers of the council to be able to have input to this strategy. And I'd be really disappointed if we didn't have. Would you think that it's going to come, that part of this process will see councillors' input?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the question councillor Dawson. I think the way that the motion is words certainly affords, you know, it's broad enough to afford as much time as was required to get any forthcoming strategy right. It's broad enough. It hasn't got a time limit on it. It's not imposing a budget per se in its request. So as general manager, I'm comfortable if the motion is moved as presented, that we could resource to develop another strategy. You know, to make sure it is the right strategy for this council and its community, working in partnership with all relevant agencies. And, you know, it will be a journey for this council and its community and indeed its staff to, to get an appreciation and understanding of both the local and regional context in which, you know, this insidious issue is, you know, is an undercurrent of all of society. But I'm comfortable with the wording of the motion as it is, that it doesn't commit this council to any timeframes that's going to make it a resource burden on the council financially or staff wise.
Okay, there is a queue of two people in the waiting. So first we're going to go to councillor Micalletto, I think he was first. And then second, we go to deputy mayor. So Andrew, over to you.
Firstly, I'd like to commend councillor Brooks for bringing this issue to the table. Been a long time coming, I think. And I think, you know, us as a Been a long time coming, I think. And I think, you know, us as a community should definitely be looking at developing some sort of a strategy in regards to this rather than leading it to the state government. In regards to councillor Dawson's comments, like this, this motion is to develop a domestic family and sexual violence strategy. And that's what we're voting on here today. I guess how that strategy is put together is up for future discussion. But here today, we're voting on whether the council develops a domestic family and sexual violence strategy and should be left as such.
Well said. Thank you very much. Councillor Harris.
Just on, not on an opinion of the actual motion, but I've been a fair advocate for not bringing motions or things to workshops in the morning and having them devoted on in the afternoon. Well, this is one step further than that, that it's not been addressed at all within council. And that's why I moved the procedural motion, because we should be able to have a good discussion on it prior to actually bringing it to a meeting and bringing it out in the open. So anyway, obviously.
Right. There being no further speakers, questions, procedural motions or otherwise were returned to councillor Brooks to close.
Yes, thank you councillors. I certainly understand the comments that were made. There are a couple of corrections I'd like to make. So my reference to Brisbane City Council wasn't that we endorsed their strategy, but it was reading theirs that prompted me to raise it today. So at no stage am I even remotely suggesting we copy any of their strategy. Secondly, I mentioned that Trish contacted us from our watch and that they've developed a local government toolkit and that they're looking to partner with, you know, organisations to develop these strategies. So there's resourcing and knowledge and expertise offered to us. And thirdly, yes, no, at no point have I said how we develop the strategy. Of course, we're going to consult in line with our consultation policy. And so this is just to get the agreement today that we will work together on it, not how we do it, but that we will do it. We need to be decisive. This is just a commitment today to decide, yes, we will not tolerate this in our community any longer and we're going to stand up and do something about it. So I hope that you will vote in the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brooks. And with no further ado, we will put Brett to a vote. All of those in favour of item 15.1, please raise your hand. We have councillor Barwick, councillor Brooks, councillor Harris, councillor Barrowclough, councillor Micalletta, councillor Dawson, councillor Mason. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. And it's councillor Keizer and councillor Parks. The motion is carried. It moves us on to item 15.2, the council workshop motion from councillor Barwick. And I'll read it, that Georgetown council convene normal monthly council workshops approximately two weeks before the monthly council meeting and that the content of workshops be altered to better reflect the intent and purpose of workshops. Councillor Barwick is obviously the mover. Do I have a second? I will ask one final time. Do I have a second? Councillor Micalletta is seconding.
Thank you councillor Micalletta. The purpose of the council workshops is that they offer an opportunity for staff and councillors to have open and frank discussions regarding the update of policies and procedures, the future direction of council, opportunities that present from developers and government, budgetary considerations, the performance of council, to receive presentations like we did today, which was great, and review long-term financial annual strategic plans. In order for this system to work, workshops need to be held a couple of weeks before the monthly council meeting in order to give the staff time to make necessary considerations to and make any changes to the content of potential agenda items to be considered at the council meeting. At the moment, a workshop is generally held before the council meeting and consists of discussions about the agenda item, except for today, for the meeting in the afternoon. The timing of the workshops is therefore inappropriate in my eyes due to the fact that the agenda for the meeting is already in the public arena and there is therefore no time to change the details presented. Also, I find that this process does not meet the intended purpose of council workshops as listed in the municipal government day.
Thank you.
You'll see.
Thank you. Councillor Micalletta.
Yes, I tend to support what councillor Barwick's just put forward, just to give everyone time to, I guess, take in what has been discussed at the previous workshop. And I remember we originally said that we would have a second workshop closer or prior to the council meeting to discuss anything that may, we may have run out of time to or any urgent matters. But then later, we looked at basically just having this time for presentations like we did previously today. So I do agree in the fact that the content of workshops, major content of workshops should be held two weeks prior, but still believe that we should have possibly a workshop prior to the meeting, just with presentations rather than discussions of previous workshops.
Thank you councillor Micalletta. Before I move forward, I'm going to ask a question to the general manager. Mr. General Manager, can you relate specific incidences where we produce late items to a workshop agenda prior to a council meeting that is a contravention of the standard policy?
I'll do my best, Mr. Mayor. We don't have a standard policy. We have a resolution of council that talks about meeting frequencies and timing. But there has been general consensus through workshop discussion that workshops prior to council meeting would not include presentations or discussions on matters that are being listed for council decision of that day. We have had recent examples where we haven't abided by that general consensus, including during the month of April. In the month of April, we were impacted by an Easter holiday period. We had a one-day special workshop specific to budget deliberations and discussions and therefore the agenda of April did have a number of, about three matters that I can recall listed for the workshop prior to that meeting, seeking decision at that meeting. Generally speaking, we will always attempt to not have anything before council on the morning of the council meeting unless something has changed prior between the workshop, it has been presented to the time it's been considered by council. If it's a late item that I've considered and present to council for consideration, for inclusion into the agenda, which doesn't have to be accepted by council, I might add. So the general manager will put up a late report, it'll provide the reasons in accordance to the act of why the general manager has deemed it should be considered late, but council doesn't have to accept it as late. And council always, of course, has the ability to defer any matter before a council meeting to a workshop if it feels it hasn't been given sufficient time or sufficient information for it to make a decision that day. Of course, there will always be, on a rare occasion, where matters might come to the table, where we haven't had the ability as officers to present that to council. And in fact, we've seen some in recent times requiring, you know, councils' input into different legislation, draft bills going before the legislative council that haven't afforded time to come before council. So in my view, and what I'll attempt to always do is to avoid having something before council the morning of that meeting and give sufficient information and timing for all matters before council, whenever we can.
My, to my recollection, I do believe there have only been two specific occasions where a late item has been put forward. That's my recollection anyway. Any other speakers to the motion? Councillor Harris.
Your recollection is not very accurate. So the last three meetings have had late items introduced on the morning. And that's why I will support councillor Barwick's motion.
Right. Any other speakers?
Can just, Mr. Mayor, for the minutes, can we just record that councillor Winston Mason's internet has dropped out again? It's at 3:27.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other speakers to, for, against questions? I'll speak, yep, councillor Dawson.
Personally, I can't see how much, it's much different than what we currently do. Neither here nor there. Like, we already have a workshop, not workshops, workshop, two weeks before the council meeting. And if there are, if there is an overflow, then those things will get tacked on to workshop prior to the council meeting, which we're all aware of. And it's been good because we've had a fair bit of, fair high workflow. So you've been able to get those extra things out of the way and keep us informed. I think that's what the workshops are for, is to keep us informed. If we're going to push things back, then we'll go back to how we used to do things and we're waiting, waiting, waiting and frustrated because we can't get the information that we're required to make a decision. So I'm opposed to it. I see that the way the motion is worded, it talks about workshops in the plural. Are we planning on having two or more two weeks before the council meeting? Or is it just one? Or is that a typo? Or what is it?
Councillor Barwick, do you care to clarify?
Just as you do councillor Barwick. I'm sorry for the interjection, Mr. Mayor. Just for the minutes, councillor Mason has returned to the meeting. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Councillor Barwick.
Am I just answering this or am I sealing the debate?
No, you're just answering the question.
I think it's just my grammar. I suppose it should have been council workshop.
Thank you. Any further speakers? All right, I will speak to the motion. Okay. Be careful what you sign up for because we originally started with one workshop and then we decided because we developed such a tremendous backlog of content that needed to be presented to stick to the current strategy, which is anything that requires a deep amount of assimilation directly read, leading to a meeting motion is done two weeks prior. And then the morning of the presentation, basically you'll get presentations and nothing that you need to do pre-study with because there wouldn't be a motion directly related to that morning's workshop content. I acknowledge that there have been some exceptions and I note the deputy mayor's correction. Thank you very much. And I'm aware of some scenarios where there were late items that had been presented. Because there was a timing limit imposed and a decision, there was a strong benefit for making a decision immediately at that meeting. Now, one related to a capital item and one related to acquisition of a late minute, acquisition which was introduced as a late item. The one thing that I would say, and again, you know, the role of the chair is never to take a side or to take a position, but to simply cast a lens that says, if any decision is made, are all the facts, is all the data and all the information presented that gives you enough of a background to make an informed decision for your community? In both of these cases, I believe that that was absolutely met and I think that those motions were carried successfully. And I don't believe that abandoning the current structure is going to achieve anything. You're going to get to a situation where you're either going to have to then choose another day prior, two weeks prior to the meeting. So that's maybe you could go for a Tuesday followed by a Wednesday to have double workshops to achieve this two-week spacing. Or, and as I have noted, and I've supported the deputy mayor's observations, I've said so vocally and I've raised it with the general manager, that we need to make an effort to limit the amount of late items that are introduced to the week before's workshop. And the general manager has made a commitment to do that. Again, the current exceptions will apply if it's in the interests of the community. And to do that, or there is an exceptional time sensitive manner that needs acting upon, then we will continue to do that. Again, if the council doesn't like that, they can vote against the motion or they can vote to defer. So this motion does not have my support. I don't believe you're going to achieve anything. And if you're happy to go and go offer up another day of your time for workshopping to meet the two-week timeframe, then that's fine. Vote to support it. Councillor, Deputy Mayor Harris.
Just a clarification there, we're not actually voting to have any less workshops. We're voting to have the same that we have currently, or we can still have special workshops when that is required, like budgetary or other items. But there's also the fact that we could introduce something that was going to come up in a month's time on the morning of a meeting, in a workshop in the morning, but not something that's going to come up that afternoon.
Any further speakers? Councillor Barwick to close.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Harris. You are correct. We're not doing anything other than not having a workshop that will discuss what's happening at the council meeting. The reason I put this forward was also that because, to me, workshop is to present councillors with briefing notes and information so that the council often consider it before being required to debate the items and make decisions on those matters. We get that two weeks before, not on the day of a council meeting. We should not be given information or stuff that's happening at that, on that day. On many occasions, it did, I can't say the word, oblique, oblique, I can't say the good, anyway, it doesn't matter. I'll go it another way. On many occasions, it's at least prudent for councillors to be able to consult with ratepayers on an agenda item before making decisions on those items. The agenda is out in the community, the community has it, we can discuss it, but we should not be discussing it, the agenda items at a workshop. Right? It just prevents us being able to go and research and make comments. Today's workshop, wow, that's what the council meeting day should be about. Bring people in that want to address the council. Talk to us and that's what our morning's about. Does not go into being involved with council.
Can I ask a question?
I have left this, I have left this meeting at, and been at a council meeting, know what day it is. I've asked a question at a workshop and I asked it for a ratepayer and I could not go out of that workshop and tell the ratepayer the comments that were made. I won't do that anymore. That is what made me possessed to put this motion forward is, we discuss what's on the agenda, on the agenda day, nothing more. And I just hope that people will understand where I'm coming from. And I know there's been a couple of new councillors that have got confused with what's happened at a council meeting on the day and what's happened on a workshop of the same day. And it just separates them. And that's the best way to do things. It makes it separate from what a workshop versus a council meeting.
So councillor Barwick, you have some nagging concerns with some of the language you use there because it may be pointing to a breach of confidentiality. But are you saying that on the basis of your past experience, you will no longer be respecting the confidentiality of confidential?
No, I said I could not. I asked a question on behalf of a ratepayer and I could not, I asked it, I had it to ask at my council meeting day on the open council agenda. But I asked it when you were talking about it at the workshop. So I couldn't go and give them their results. I couldn't give them to them because I never did it at the council table. That is where another confusion that I got caught up in because I asked something that I had listed to ask in my agenda at the workshop.
Can we put the motion?
Because we were discussing the council agenda.
We have a procedural motion to put the motion, but I think we can just put this one straight to a vote. Are you happy for us to put it to a vote? Are you closed councillor Barwick?
Mr. Councillor Dawson closed me for me.
Okay. Well, you were the mover, so. Okay, well, you were the mover, so, and councillor Dawson wasn't closing, he's not the second either. So with that, we will put it to a vote to close this out. All those in favour of item fifteen point two, please raise your hand. We have councillor Barwick, we have councillor Brooks, and we have councillor Harris. All those opposed to item fifteen point two, please raise your hand. We have councillor Keizer, councillor Barrowclough, councillor Micalletta, councillor Dawson, councillor Mason, councillor Parks, the motion is defeated. Now, the item sixteen, pardon, and this is questions with or without notice. There is one question from councillor Parks, which I'll read out. Councillor Parks has requested that council officers via the mayor and general manager provide elected members with options on local meeting procedures for council. And the response is that council officers are progressing councillor Parks's request and will present options to council for discussion at a future council workshop. Thank you councillor Parks. Item number seventeen, council committee reports, there are none. Item eighteen, closed meeting, so item eighteen point one, do I have a mover to move us into closed session, please? We have councillor Dawson and councillor Mason and others. Councillor Dawson?
No, nothing to say.
Thank you. Councillor Mason, anything to add?
Fine.
Any questions? Councillor Dawson, do you want to close?
Sorry.
Let's put that to a vote, all those to vote, to move to closed session, please raise your hand. We have all, except Heather, Heather, you're voting to support moving into closed session. There we go, you're anonymous, thank you. Thank you for those who have been.
With that, Mister Mayor, I'll now pause the recording of the meeting.
Thank you, Sean.
And with that, Mister Mayor, I've just commenced re-recording.
So the time is now three forty-one, and the general meeting will resume. There being no further items in closed session, and we will then close the meeting at three.
One minute.
Two.
Behave yourself.
And I would thank everyone from the public who attended this meeting, with a vibrant debate and some interesting motions. Commend the team for your work, thank you very much, and we'll see you again next month, much appreciate.
Sean?